All right, so again, 7:04, the appointed hour having arrived and a quorum being present. I will now call the special town meeting to order. I will ask the town clerk to come forward to read the warning and the return.
Hello, okay, now it's on, sorry about that, folks. Good evening. To either of the constables of the town of Freetown, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs to meet at Aponequit Regional High School, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the 5th day of June 2023, at 7:00 p.m., and then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asonet Post Office, the East Freetown Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asonet, the Freetown Town Hall, Freetown Communication Center, and Freetown Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hear of, fail not, and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown this 15th day of May, anno domino 2023. Sign the Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jared C. Zager, Carlos A. Lopes. This is the warrant for the special town meeting, Town of Freetown, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, June 5th, 2023, 7:00 p.m., Aponequit Regional High School, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, 02347. May 19th, 2023. To the town clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts. I have this day posted attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein: in Asonet, the Asonet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, the Freetown Town Hall; in East Freetown, the East Freetown Post Office, Fire Station Number Three; and the Freetown Communication Center and the town's website, www.freetownma.gov. Signed, Carlton Abbott, Constable.
Thank you. All right, so just a couple of notes before we start. If you have a cellphone, please make sure that it is on silent. If you do wish to speak during the meeting, we have microphones, it looks like, at the bottom of each aisle. You'll want to come to the microphone, you need to give your name, and at the very least, which side of town you live on, Asonet or East Freetown, you don't have to give your address specifically. You should have that white vote ticket, at least the first time you come up to speak, because this meeting is for registered voters, we need to make sure you are one. And during the special town meeting, all articles will be funded from free cash unless otherwise specified. So with that, we will start with Article One. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $73,109.59 to be added to the Conservation Land Fund established under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8(c) and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Conservation Commission, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article One as read, is there any discussion? Sure?
Hello, my name is David, I'm from Freetown. On the amount, it seems like an odd number, $73,109.59. What is the current balance on the land fund anyway right now? When was the last time any of this money was purchased to buy land?
I've just, I have some people saying they can't hear you, so you'd have to speak a little bit louder.
It's an odd number for the amount that you want, I'm saying, previous, what is the balance on the land fund as of right now, and when was the last time land was purchased through this fund?
Okay. Victoria, if you want to. So we have, we have our non-voter section over here, and we do have a couple of our employees and department heads who are not residents, who are in this corner, so they'll get up to speak from time to time if they have the answers to questions. Just don't hit yourself in the head with a mic.
Okay. Hi, I'm Victoria, I'm the Planning and Land Use Administrator for the town. So the current balance in the land fund is $104,000. Okay, it's $104,000, and we are actually in the middle of purchasing a property for $48,500, which will bring our balance down to $55,500, I'm sorry. This is our first time in a while purchasing a property. Most properties that the Conservation Commission gets are through donation, but it's good to have a well-funded land fund in order to protect Freetown's open space.
Going to take a moment, and I don't mean to embarrass you, but I'd like everybody to congratulate, Victoria just got married about two weeks ago. Are there any further questions or discussion on Article One? Okay, hearing none. Did we, there is a motion, so all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article One is adopted unanimously. Article Two. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Assessors, excuse me, to enter into agreements for payment in lieu of taxes pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 45th, as amended by Section 61 of Chapter 8 of the Acts of 2021, on such terms and conditions and for a term of years as the Board of Assessors deems in the best interest of the town for taxes attributable to a solar facility owned and operated as follows. Number one, Marie's Way Solar 1 LLC or its affiliates, successors, or assigns, on land located at 84 Chase Road, Assessors Map 228, Lot 8.02. Two, Brayley Road Solar 4 LLC or its affiliates, successors, or assigns, on land located at 23 Brayley Road, Assessors Map 242, Lot 108. Three, Renewable Energy Alternatives or its affiliates, successors, or assigns, on land located at 30 Washburn Road, Assessors Map 227, Lot 20. Number four, New Leaf Energy Incorporated or its affiliates, successors, or assigns, on land located at 18 US RV Way, Assessors Map 214, Lot 104. New Leaf Energy Incorporated or its affiliates, successors, or assigns, on land located at 20 Algonquin Way, Assessors Map 248, Lot 84, and 15 Boxbury Lane, Assessors Map 251, Lot 7. And number six, DHMA Solar Owner LLC or its affiliates, successors, or assigns, on land located at 107 Chase Road, Assessors Map 241, Lot 40, and 164 Quantapog Road, Assessors Map 255, Lot 61. And further, to authorize the Board of Assessors to take any such action as may be necessary or convenient to carry out the vote taken hereunder and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Two as read, is there any discussion?
I just have one question.
Oh, you got it.
Brian from East Freetown.
All right, we do, I don't want to pick on Brian, but we do need last names with first names.
Miller, Brian Miller. So is this basically kind of like how if you put land into forestry, you do kind of defer the payments and make a payment as well? How does this handle if the land, you know, in 20 years from now decides that they don't want to be solar anymore? Is the land itself exempt from taxes while it's being used as solar only, or is this land forever not paying taxes and making payments? And what, and I guess this is a two-part question, is what kind of payments do they make in lieu of taxes?
All right, so I'm going to defer that to the Board of Assessors. I know, so Jeff's going to come down. I know I heard Paul, I see Paul back there.
So Brian, thank you for that question, Jeff Field, Board of Assessors. The land is not exempt, the solar farms are not exempt from taxes. So the land, many times, or help, landowner is different than the solar farm, so the landowner will still continue to be taxed as real estate tax. The, the purpose of this pilot agreement is to, solar has a great amount of depreciation as the time goes on in its lifetime. So the value of solar depreciates greatly and substantially within the first 10 years of a 20-year lifetime, therefore dropping off dramatically in the value that the town would receive in taxation. So the purpose of the pilot agreement is to standardize the agreements over 20 years, and that agreement would be paid consistently and would help the town with its budgeting purposes and financing the budget of the town. It allows us to better forecast and plan, and I know, does that answer your question, Brian? The, we, the Board of Assessors, these solar farms were brought to the ATB, the Appellate Tax Board in Boston, and we were brought into mediation by the Appellate Tax Board. At that point in time, we did hire experts in the solar valuation, and they have worked out the pilot agreement, the details of which are not up for discussion at this point in time, but they have worked out an agreement that is benefit, benefits the town over the next 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Are there any additional questions or discussion on Article Two? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article Two is adopted unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 30b, Section 12, Clause B, to authorize the Board of Assessors to solicit and award contracts for assessing consultants for terms exceeding three years but no greater than five years, including any renewal, extension, or option provided in each instance, the longer term is determined to be in the best interest of the town and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Assessors, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Three as read, is there any discussion on Article Three? Sure?
On this, my name is David, I'm from Freetown, on this...
I'm sorry, the same, we need a last name.
Bernard.
All right, thank you.
Saying on this, do the, when it goes out to bid, do they take the lowest bid, or is it their discretion who they want to take?
I believe it is the lowest bid, but I will defer, our town administrator is also our procurement officer, so she may know better on this than I.
So it's not always the lowest bid, is it, the request for proposals that will factor in other things that go into who we hire from specials? It can be how much experience they have in the field, what other... There is other factors that we use sometimes to hire a consultant, such as their experience in the field, how many years they've been doing it, but it does go out for procurement, and then we do make a decision based on all of the, the information that we gather.
Yeah, I know, originally, it was three years ago, they had the trash pickup bid, and went to Borges, Bullock was actually the lowest bid, Freetown overpaid, and across three years, that was $430,000 more, you know what I mean? I know some people had some complaints, but I never had to complain about my trash pickup. I'm just saying, it's pretty much your discretion, we'll never know about it, right?
So that was a request for proposal where there was other factors that were considered in the hiring of the, the company that picks up the trash, and probably their, their service and what their timeline was, I could go back and look at the RFP, but that's in the past.
I just know the numbers, that's all.
Is there any other questions or discussion on Article Three? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article Three is adopted unanimously. Article Four. To see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $2,441,827.55 for engineering services, architectural project management, bidding and construction services for an addition renovation and equipping of Fire Station Number Three located at 25 Bullock Road, including site preparation and any related or incidental costs, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any agreement and execute all documents, including contracts for terms in excess of three years, necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article or take any other action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Fire Station Building Subcommittee, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Four as read, is there any discussion on Article Four? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article Four is adopted unanimously. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from the Capital Stabilization Fund the sum of $550,000 for the construction and equipping of the addition renovation of Fire Station Number Three located at 25 Bullock Road, including site preparation and any related or incidental costs, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any agreement and execute all documents, including contracts for terms in excess of three years, necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Fire Station Building Subcommittee, this requires a two-thirds vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Five as read, is there any discussion on Article Five? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article Five is adopted unanimously. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the parcel of land located at 4 South Main Street and described in a deed recorded with the Bristol County Registry of Deeds in Book 2895, page 203, from the tax custodian for tax title purposes or from whichever board has custody thereof, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes and for the purpose of disposition by sale or lease, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said property on such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town, in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 30b, Section 16, including without limitation, reserving or obtaining a, an historic preservation restriction thereon, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any agreement and execute all documents and instruments necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a two-thirds vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Six as read, is there any discussion on Article Six? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article Six is adopted unanimously. Article Seven. To see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Three of the October 18th, 2021 Special Town Meeting appropriating $550,000 for site evaluation, engineering and design services, project management services, bidding and construction of the Council on Aging Building located at 227 Chase Road, to authorize use of $300,000 of those funds for the design, bidding, purchase, and installation of temporary office space structures to attach to the existing senior center at 227 Chase Road, East Freetown, including any related or incidental costs, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any agreement and execute all documents, including contracts for terms in excess of three years, necessary to effectuate the purposes of this article and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Seven as read, is there any discussion on Article Seven? Looks like yes.
I'm Tim McIntosh, I live on the Asonet side of town. So this is now the third article about the new, about basically a new COA. June 2020, we did $550,000, September, I'm sorry, October 2021, another $550,000, so that's $1.1 million in that, basically the, the pot of money for the Council on Aging. So I understand this money is coming from that pot of money, but is, is this a permanent solution, or how temporary are these temporary pods, is basically the gist of my question?
Government world, that's a fair question. I don't know if anybody from the Council on Aging would like to address this, if not, I'll perhaps defer to the Selectmen or the town administrator, but I'll give the COA the first crack if, if they have anybody that would like to speak to it. Okay, sure.
Yes, can you hear me? So basically, this solution, these temporary office space pods, we call them, but when you think of a pod, I think you think of more of a storage moving unit, these are classroom facilities. They are temporary, but they can last 15 to 20 years without any maintenance. We talk about them as being temporary because we are in the process of trying to build a new facility, a new building for both the COA and the library. But as you know, in municipal world, things take a little bit longer, it may be five years before we can actually build a new building, all depends on finances and how things progress. So this was a short-term solution, it could be five years, it would be what I would project, that would give the seniors some relief in their space needs at, at the COA. They, they're really struggling, the programming isn't there because they don't have the space to do the programming. We thought this was a great short-term solution, meaning a five-year solution, maybe longer, to give them the space they need until, while we're still working on getting a new building.
That's my question, thank you.
Are there any further questions or discussion on Article Seven? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article Seven is adopted unanimously. Article Eight. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money for the purpose of supplementing the Capital Stabilization Fund and/or take any action relative thereto.
He's going to move this over, we have no money left.
We have, okay, we have no money left for the special town meeting. We've got plenty of money for the annual town meeting, so at this time, I would ask for a motion to postpone Article Eight indefinitely. Motion has been so made and seconded to postpone Article Eight indefinitely, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? Article Eight is unanimously indefinitely postponed, I would ask at this time for a motion to adjourn the special town meeting. Motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye!
All opposed? All right, so I know this seems silly, but we do have to wait two and a half minutes before we start the annual town meeting, we can't start it early. So relax. I wish we had drinks to serve, we would, we'll be back in two minutes. Saints be praised, it's 7:30, the appointed hour having arrived and a quorum being present, I'll now call the annual town meeting to order. It's nice to see everybody again, I'm so glad you could come out, it's been so long since we had the special town meeting. I will now once again call upon the town clerk to come forward to read the warning and the return.
To either of the constables of the town of Freetown, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Freetown who are qualified to vote in the elections and town affairs to meet at Aponequit Regional High School, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, on Monday, the 5th day of June 2023, at 7:30 p.m., then and there to act on the following articles. And you are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof at the following places: the Asonet Post Office, the East Freetown Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store in Asonet, the Freetown Town Hall, Freetown Communication Center, and Freetown Fire Rescue Station Number Three. Hear of, fail not, and make return of the original warrant with your doings thereon immediately after making service thereof to the town clerk of the town of Freetown, Massachusetts. Given under our hands and seal of the town of Freetown, this 15th day of May, anno domino 2023. Sign the Town of Freetown Board of Selectmen, Trevor R. Matthews, Jared C. Zager, Carlos A. Lopes. Warrant for the annual town meeting, Town of Freetown, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Monday, June 5th, 2023, 7:30 p.m., Aponequit Regional High School, Robert C. Falcon Auditorium, 100 Howland Road, Lakeville, Massachusetts, 02347. May 19th, 2023. To the town clerk, Town of Freetown, Massachusetts. I have this day posted and attested copies of this warrant in the designated places described herein: in Asonet, the Asonet Post Office, Junior's Convenience Store, and the Freetown Town Hall; in East Freetown, the East Freetown Post Office, Fire Station Number Three, and the Freetown Communication Center and the town's website, www.freetownma.gov. Signed, Carlton Abbott, Constable.
Thank you. Once again, if you have a cellphone, please set it to silent. Again, if you have a question or a comment, feel free to come down to the microphones, just give your name, first and last name, and what side of town you live on. If it's your first time coming, again, have your vote ticket so that we will know that you are a voter. For the annual town meeting, unless otherwise specified, all articles will be funded through taxation. And I'm just going to point out, last November for anybody, October for anybody that was at the special town meeting, you had heard that our accountant, Kim Fields, had retired. We have a new accountant, all the way down to the end, that's Matt Parent, he was hired over the winter, so, thank you, please welcome Matt. Matt is a lifelong town resident, is that correct?
The part that matters, yeah.
The part that matters. I'd also like to recognize, at the same time that Kim was retiring, we had somebody else last fall who was going to retire, but who does not like the spotlight, and I don't believe that he's here, so I feel safe in saying I'd like to acknowledge Gary Sylvia retired in January as fire chief after over 40 years with the fire department. And we had, we had another retirement that happened this spring, another long time of our employees, Barbara Place, retired from the senior center, 25 years as the director of the senior center. And not to be forgotten, later this month, we will have another retirement, Carlton Abbott will be retiring as police chief after, again, a very lengthy career with the police department, and Carlton, I know, is here. So thank you for, for showing appreciation to these folks, because they have given quite a bit of time and service to the town, and you don't see that as often anymore. So, thank you. We will move on to Article One. We will start with Town Moderator for Personnel, five hundred twenty-five dollars. For Expenses, ninety dollars. For a total of six hundred fifteen dollars. For the Board of Selectmen for Personnel, twenty-one thousand dollars. For Expenses, thirteen thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. For a total of thirty-four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. For the Town Administrator for Personnel, two hundred ninety-four thousand one hundred seventy-one dollars and two cents. For Expenses, seventy-eight thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars. For a total of three hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and two cents. For the Finance Committee for Personnel, fifteen hundred dollars. For Expenses, thirty-six hundred dollars. For a total of fifty-one hundred dollars. For the Reserve Fund, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. For the Town Accountant for Personnel, one hundred twenty-four thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars. For Expenses, five thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. For a total of one hundred thirty thousand fifty dollars. For the Town Audit, twenty-two thousand dollars. For the Board of Select, uh, Board of Assessors for Personnel, sixty-one thousand five dollars. For Overtime, one hundred ninety-two dollars. For Expenses, twenty thousand thirty dollars. For a total of eighty-one thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars. For the Assessor's Revaluation, eighty-one thousand eighty dollars. For the Treasurer's Office, Personnel, one hundred eighty thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and twelve cents. For Expenses, forty-six thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and twelve cents. For a total of two hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty-four cents. For Legal Fees, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Management Information Systems, eighty-five thousand dollars. Tax Title Foreclosures, twenty-seven thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Town Clerk, Personnel, one hundred forty-eight thousand eighty-three dollars. Overtime, fifteen hundred dollars. Expenses, fifteen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars. For a total of one hundred sixty-five thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars. For Primaries and Elections, for Personnel, twenty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. For Expenses, twenty-eight thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars. For a total of fifty-five thousand six hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents. For Registration, for Personnel, two thousand one hundred twenty-nine dollars. For Expenses, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. For a total of thirteen thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars. For the Conservation Commission, for Personnel, five thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars. For Expenses, thirty thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. For a total of thirty-six thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars. For the Planning Board, for Personnel, one hundred thousand one hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-two cents. For overtime, two thousand nine hundred dollars and twenty cents. For expenses, twelve thousand four hundred dollars. For a total of one hundred fifteen thousand four hundred thirty-six dollars and two cents. Hold on the Planning Board. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, for Personnel, zero dollars. For Expenses, eleven hundred fifty dollars. For a total of eleven hundred fifty dollars. For the Soil Conservation Board, for Personnel, seven hundred dollars. For Expenses, four hundred dollars. For a total of eleven hundred dollars. For the Economic Development Committee, for Personnel, zero dollars. For Expenses, five hundred dollars. For a total of five hundred dollars. For Public Buildings and Property Maintenance, for Personnel, sixty-seven thousand seven hundred twenty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. For overtime, sixteen hundred eight dollars. For Expenses, three hundred fifty-four thousand two hundred fifty dollars. For a total of four hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred eighty dollars and seventy-four cents. For Property Insurance, for Expenses, one hundred seventeen thousand four hundred dollars. For the Annual Town Reports, two thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. And for the D E P Hazmat Assessment, zero dollars. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendations for all of the budgets in general government except for the Planning Board. Motion is made and seconded as read. Uh, should be no discussion because only the Planning Board is on hold, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those budgets are adopted unanimously. We will now return to the Planning Board.
Uh, Tim McIntosh again, uh, from Asonet. Um, so last, last June, I think it was at the special town meeting, might have been the annual town meeting, uh, we were, we approved a, uh, adding a town planner position to the bylaws. Does this, uh, the, the planning personnel budget, does that include the, a town planner as well?
Okay, Victoria?
That would go to you again.
Hi, Victoria, Planning and Land Use Administrator. Um, no, it does not include, uh, funding the town planner position. This would be for my position as a planning and land use administrator, um, and for funding a planning technician. Um, I'm the only one in my office that works for Conservation Commission, Planning Board, uh, V B A, and Soil Board, so my office is starting to need help so that that, to keep the planning technician position funded, is to get someone to help out in the office.
Makes sense to me. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so Tim, did you put that on hold? Oh, no, there's somebody else.
Little one's, uh, David right now, uh, East Freetown. Just trying to get off, off topic here. And the special town, is this mandatory to get mail to every resident in the Freetown when you have a meeting here?
Um, so it is not. It's something the Selectmen and the Finance Committee.
Let's see, a year ago, uh, we had a meeting, it was, uh, about two and a half over the right of office, I'm putting it. I don't think things were going well, but they felt it was like one, so you tabled the vote. Basically, whenever it overrides, like that.
They, they had it through the town election, and they put it on that, which I don't think was quite right. But, you know, if you were gonna do that, you should have put, should have had a mail to everybody else to notify them. I wasn't aware of it. Laugh for the fact.
That's okay. Uh, so that is a motion to call the question. Is there a second? All right. So the motion to call the question means to end debate and to simply take a vote? Actually, we don't have a motion on the Planning Board right now, so we can't call the question because there's no question to call.
Call, Sergeant. We don't make a motion if we don't have a question.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the Planning Board and the requested number, which is also the recommended number. Uh, because the other mo, was, uh, other motion a moment ago was invalid, the gentleman's question is still on the, on the floor.
Yeah, I was just questioning the Select Board and saying, why did you do the things that you did? There was, you know, no, no explanation. There was kind of like, we talked about it last year at the time, we had a debate about it, and that was, that was it. You don't, you don't like to have discussions, I believe. It's kind of, you want things your way and that's it. It seemed like it was kind of, uh, you tabled it and you went a different route. Because I didn't, I didn't think it was gonna go your way. That's all.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded now properly to call the question on the Planning Board budget. There is no debate. This is simply a vote. This is on the motion to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion to call the question is adopted unanimously. We now move immediately to vote on the Planning Board budget. The motion before us is to adopt in the requested amount, which is also the recommended amount. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Planning Board budget is adopted unanimously as requested and recommended. We are now on to the protection of persons and property or public safety. Police Department, overtime, two hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred sixteen dollars and forty-six cents. Personnel, two million one hundred sixteen thousand seven hundred two dollars and three cents. Expenses, one hundred ninety-eight thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. For a total of two million five hundred fifty-three thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-one cents. Communication Center, for overtime, thirty-five thousand five hundred eleven dollars and fifty-six cents. Personnel, three hundred seventy-eight thousand four hundred forty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Expenses, fifty-eight thousand six hundred one dollars. For a total of four hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. For the Fire Department, for overtime, two hundred twenty thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars. For Personnel, one million three hundred ninety-three thousand eight hundred sixty-one dollars. For Expenses, one hundred fifty-seven thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars. For a total of one million seven hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred six dollars. For the Building Department, for Personnel, one hundred thirty-two thousand four hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-six cents. For Expenses, ten thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. For a total of one hundred forty-three thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents. For the Gas Inspectors, seven thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars. For the Plumbing Inspectors, seven thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars. For the Sealer of Weights and Measures, six thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars. For the Electrical Inspectors, twenty-five thousand dollars. For Civil Defense, for Personnel, six thousand two hundred ninety dollars. For Expenses, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. For a total of twenty-two thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. For the Animal Control Officer, for Personnel, thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. For Expenses, nine thousand three hundred sixty-two dollars. For a total of forty-eight thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars. For the Tree Warden, for Personnel, fourteen thousand two hundred dollars. For Expenses, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. For a total of forty-four thousand ninety dollars. For the Harbor Master, for Expenses, one hundred dollars. I will ask at this time for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended budgets for the public safety budgets. Motion is made and seconded, since there were no holds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Those budgets are adopted unanimously. For Education, there were a number of lines in the education section that requested no money this year, so I'm only going to read those lines that did. For School Committee Stipends, for Personnel, four thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars. For the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District Regional Assessment for Education, twelve million eight hundred seventy thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. For the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District Regional Assessment for Transportation, two hundred five thousand twenty-nine dollars. For Regional Debt, for the George R. Ross Elementary Institute, otherwise called the Old Middle School, forty-eight thousand eight hundred seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. For a total for the Freetown-Lakeville Region of thirteen million one hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. For the Bristol County Agricultural High School, one hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred. For the Old Colony Vocational High School, nineteen thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars. And for the Bristol Plymouth Vocational School, nine hundred sixty-four thousand twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. I will ask again for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures for the education budgets. Motion made and seconded to adopt those budgets and the requested figures as read, the education budgets. Again, there were no holds, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The education budgets are adopted unanimously. For Education, there were a number of lines in the education section that requested no money this year, so I'm only going to read those lines that did. For School Committee Stipends, for Personnel, four thousand four hundred twenty-four dollars. For the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District Regional Assessment for Education, twelve million eight hundred seventy thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. For the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District Regional Assessment for Transportation, two hundred five thousand twenty-nine dollars. For Regional Debt, for the Georgia R. Ross Intermediate School, otherwise called the Old Middle School, forty-eight thousand eight hundred seven dollars and eighty-seven cents. For a total for the Freetown-Lakeville Region of thirteen million one hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents. For the Bristol County Agricultural High School, one hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred. For the Old Colony Vocational High School, nineteen thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars. And for the Bristol Plymouth Vocational School, nine hundred sixty-four thousand twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents. I will ask again for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures for the education budgets. Motion made and seconded to adopt those budgets and the requested figures as read, the education budgets. Again, there were no holds, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The education budgets are adopted unanimously. Public Works. In the Highway Department, for overtime, two thousand dollars. For Personnel, five hundred thirty thousand six hundred thirty-eight dollars. Expenses, two hundred twenty-two thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. For a total of seven hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred twenty-three dollars. For Snow and Ice Removal, for overtime, twenty thousand dollars. For Expenses, one hundred thirty thousand dollars. For a total of one hundred fifty thousand dollars. For Street Lamps, forty-five hundred dollars. For Trash Collection and Disposal, eight hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars. For the Transfer Station, for Personnel, one hundred thirty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty cents. For Overtime, five hundred dollars. For Expenses, one hundred sixty-one thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. For a total of two hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty cents. Excuse me. For the Cemetery Commission, for Personnel, zero dollars. For Expenses, twenty-seven thousand one hundred sixty dollars. For a total of twenty-seven thousand one hundred sixty dollars. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the public works budgets as recommended by the Finance Committee. Motion made and seconded. There were no holds, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The public works budgets are adopted unanimously. For Health and Human Services. For Health and Ser, Health Inspection Services, otherwise called the Board of Health. For Personnel, one hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred forty-two dollars and thirty cents. Excuse me. For Expenses, sixty-five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. For a total of two hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. For the Council on Aging, for Personnel, one hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred sixteen dollars and forty-three cents. For Expenses, twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. For a total of one hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-three cents. Veteran Services, for Personnel, twelve thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars. For Expenses, one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. For a total of one hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars. Memorial and Veterans Day, for Expenses, twenty-two hundred dollars. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the Health and Human Services budgets as recommended by the Finance Committee. Motion made and seconded. There were no holds, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Health and Human Services budgets are adopted unanimously. For Culture. For the Libraries, for Personnel, one hundred fifty thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. For Expenses, fifty thousand dollars. For a total of two hundred thousand twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. For the Arts Cultural Council, thirty-five hundred dollars. For the Historical Commission, five hundred dollars. For the Parade and Fireworks Committee, three thousand dollars. For the Community Program Department, for Personnel, twenty-five thousand dollars. For Expenses, nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. For a total of thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended budgets for culture budgets. Motion made and seconded to adopt the culture budgets as recommended by the Finance Committee. There were no holds, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The culture budgets are adopted unanimously. For Debt Service, for the Retirement of Debt, for the Freetown Elementary School, Principal Excluded Debt, six hundred ten thousand dollars. Principal Excluded Debt on the New Police Station, five hundred thousand dollars. For a total of Retirement of Debt of one million one hundred ten thousand dollars. Interest on Long-Term Debt, Freetown Elementary, Interest Excluded, sixty-one hundred dollars. For the New Police Station, Interest Excluded, sixty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. For a total Interest on Long-Term Debt of seventy-three thousand six hundred dollars. Ask for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended numbers for Debt Service. Motion made and seconded to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended numbers for Debt Service. There were no holds, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Debt Service Budgets are adopted unanimously. We're getting toward the end, I promise. For Unclassified, for SERPED, requested and recommended, one thousand nine hundred three dollars and eighty cents. For Retirement and Pension Contributions, requested and recommended, one million four hundred seventy-six thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. For Workman's Comp, uh, one hundred thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. For Unemployment Benefits, thirty-two thousand seventy-four dollars. For Health Insurance, one million eight hundred eighty-five thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-three cents. For Life Insurance, twenty-two hundred dollars. For Medicare, eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. For Liability Insurance, eighty-two thousand nine hundred sixty-four dollars. For Townwide Fueling, one hundred forty-nine thousand six dollars and eighty-two cents. And for Transfer to Trust for the Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. I will ask for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended figures for the unclassified budgets. Motion made and seconded to adopt the Finance Committee's recommendations for the unclassified budgets. There were no holds, and seeing none now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The unclassified budgets are, are adopted unanimously. And now for the capital budget. Uh, again, there are several lines that had no requests, so I won't read those. I'll only read the lines that have figures. For Lease of Existing Police Cruisers, ninety-four thousand five hundred twenty-seven dollars and ninety-two cents. For Leases of New Police Cruisers, twenty-two thousand seventy-two dollars and eight cents. For Lease of Existing Fire and EMS Apparatus, two hundred thirteen thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. For the Purchase of Fire and EMS Equipment, one hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. For the Lease of Existing Highway Vehicles and Equipment, excuse me, one hundred forty-four thousand six hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents. All the way down to the end, for the Purchase of All Other, fifty-five thousand two hundred. For a Total Capital Equipment Budget of six hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. Capital Building Improvements, for Town Buildings and Other Property Improvements, one hundred fifty thousand dollars. Fire Station Improvements, zero. For a Total of one hundred fifty thousand dollars for Capital Building Improvements. I will now ask for a motion to adopt the Finance Committee's recommended capital budget. Motion is made and seconded. There were no holds, and seeing none now, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The Capital Budgets are adopted unanimously, and we are now finished with Article One. Yes. I would be remiss before moving on, and I meant to say this before, uh, I don't want to put him on the spot, but if I could call on the police chief for one second. I know there are several long-tenured officers who are retiring also, and I didn't write a list down of the names, and I'd like to recognize them the same, uh, as well. for one second, I know there are several long-tenured officers who are retiring also, and I didn't write a list down of the names, and I'd like to recognize them the same as well.
On July 2nd, Lieutenant Stephen Abbot will be retiring. He began his career in 1998, and then he rose longest, so I can help him absolutely if he requires it. I'm not sure of the exact date, but I think it was probably the long-term executive officer, to be certain of his depth and his experience.
All right, moving on to Article Two. Similar to Article One, the requests and recommended figures are the same numbers, so when we go through them, you'll hear them only once. Article Two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town, as provided by Chapter 41, Section 108, and Chapter 71, Section 52 of the general laws, as amended for the fiscal year 2024 and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote. For the moderator, $175 per meeting. For the Board of Selectmen, $6,000 per member per year. For the town clerk, $72,900 per year. For the Board of Assessors, $5,000 per member per year. For the tree warden, $23 per hour. For the highway surveyor, $80,184 per year. For the regional school committee, $1,106 per member per year. And for the water and sewer commission, $250 per member per year. Motion is made and seconded to approve or adopt Article Two and the recommended amounts, is there any discussion on Article Two? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Two is adopted unanimously. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to approve the sum of $1,516,508 to operate the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund for the fiscal year 2024, with an appropriation for the following direct expenses, personnel, $137,708. Expenses, $1,288,800. For a total of $1,426,508 in the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. And the sum of $90,000 for indirect costs appropriated in the general fund as part of the omnibus budget, with all costs totaling $1,516,508. And supported with $0 from certified retained earnings, and with $1,516,508 from Water Sewer Enterprise receipts, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission, it requires a majority vote, the finance committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Three as read, is there any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Three is adopted unanimously, Article Four. To see if the town will vote to establish the following fiscal year spending limits for each revolving fund established under Article 29 of the general bylaws, and/or take any action relative thereto. For the Board of Selectmen, for the annual town reports, $1,200. For the police department, for exams, $5,000. For the police department, for firearm safety course, $10,000. For the Board of Selectmen, for Long Pond, $25,000. For the vaccine revolving fund, $5,000. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, it requires a majority vote, the finance committee recommends this article. Okay, we have a hold on Long Pond. We'll just discuss that while I'll take the motion to adopt the article as read, and we'll open for discussion on Long Pond. So, please go ahead.
Can someone, Brian Miller, East Freetown? Do you mind just explaining why the $25,000 for the Long Pond specific, just so everybody understands?
All right, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask, Jeff, are you prepared to answer that question? No, okay, Jeff. Well, I decide where it gets directed to, that's okay. Jeff, no, that's all right, Jeff is the community program director, I know he's involved with the Long Pond boat ramp, that's why I asked him first, but I'll I'll send to the town administrator and the selectmen to answer now.
So, this is a revolving fund, we receive funds from the kiosk for parking there, that goes into this revolving fund, but in order for us to spend those funds, it has to be appropriated at town meeting. We have staff down there every weekend, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, from a little bit before Memorial Day until mid-October, and we have to pay that staff, and we have to pay for the porta-johns, and we have to pay for the kiosks, and we have to pay expenses, and this is what, this is, this money is allocated for.
Thank you very much, I guess this is what the the end results of the open space and recreation committees work with the town on getting some improvements at the boat ramp. So, this is seeing the selectmen and the open space and recreation committee working for you guys.
I will ask the selectmen if you have anything to add to that, or if you're satisfied with the answers so far. Okay, terrific. Are there any additional questions or concerns on Article Four? All right, hearing none, all in favor? All opposed? Article Four is adopted unanimously, Article Five. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $45,000 for an engineering study for the Asonet Four Corners intersection, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the planning board, it requires a majority vote, the finance committee recommends this article. Oh, we need, I, no, no, you guys can come down to speak, but we need a motion before we open discussion. Thank you, a motion has been made and seconded to adopt Article Five as read, we have plenty of questions heading their way down the aisle so far.
Hi, Courtney Brightman from Asonet. Will there be any oversight of the, any oversight besides the elected board, or consultation with the regional planning agency?
Okay, Victoria, if you're Yes, so Courtney asked if there was going to be any oversight of the intersection study aside from the planning board, if it would be overseen by SERPED, the regional planning agency, or another similar entity, did I summarize that well? All right, thank you. Victoria, go ahead.
Hi, so for this engineering study, no, it would not be, SERPED would have no, our regional planning agency would not have any oversight over this. Several months ago, they did submit to the town a technical memo on the four corners, and did recommend that we have additional engineering done, that was beyond SERPED's capacity to look into the intersection and possible improvements there.
Okay. Courtney, did that answer your question? Okay, very good. Dan, please.
Dan Rosendies, East Freetown, Massachusetts. I know that in the past, we've had studies done on this before, and it's come out to the state won't allow us to put a light or anything that hampers the flow of Route 79. I was curious why we're bringing this study up again, and has the town incurred liability upwards of $45,000 for the current design of the Four Corners, and what benefits there will be to this? From what I know, if we put a rotary there based on the East Freetown project, that the people at one Elm Street or two Water Street will lose property due to intermittent domain. And what are the benefish, benefits of this?
Benefits of this. Victoria, do you have answers for those?
So, for benefits of this, I would say, we're trying to find what the best option for the intersection is, so Okay, well, I don't know what to do.
Just move a little bit, just stand or lean right in.
Okay.
Do your Diana Ross impression and go.
All right, is this better? Okay, great. So as far as the roundabout goes, that's one of the options that the engineering study would look into, and they would even look into doing a mini roundabout and see if it's, could be, trucks could mount it, but that's, that's why we Okay, all right, okay, so I'm sorry, I lost my place. So the round, part of the engineering study would be to look at all options for the intersection, as far as you saying the state wouldn't allow us to do a signalized intersection, I'm personally not aware of that. But as far as engineering study goes, we would look at all options for the intersection, including a roundabout, we do know that the space is tight over there, so that might not be a feasible option. And we will, as part of the engineering study, we do want to have public outreach, as we know, this intersection is important to the residents, and a lot of people want their, want to give their opinions. Can I answer all parts of your questions? Okay.
I know you don't want to, but Chuck, do you want to add anything to it?
I have nothing to add.
All right. Go ahead, please.
James Mello, I live in, on the Asonet side of town. And I noticed in the article description, it talks about safety. So my question is, is there some information about a change in the past few years, a number of years, about the safety concerns in that intersection? Have there been a number of accidents? I guess I'm wondering why we're looking into this? What is the safety concern, and what is it based on?
Sure, so Victoria, or Chief, if you have any accident information, or Absolutely, go ahead.
Kevin DiMaris, former planning board member, Asonet Mass. As someone who has worked 20 years at the Town Hall in Freetown, we see daily near misses, near accidents, horns honking. I've literally seen a pig in a cage fall out of the back of a pickup truck at the Four Corners. It is Freetown, mind you, I get it. But the idea that that intersection with a yield coming down the hill, who's got the right of way, it's inherently dangerous, and, or it needs to be looked at for safety purposes. I think the purpose of this article, not to speak to my, for my friends on the planning board, but this is to study it, to see, does there, is there a safety issue that exists? What is the best way to address that? It could be a simple signage, I know it was brought up that there's going to be a land taking. Yes, many years ago, there was a, there was an iteration, so to speak, a very preliminary plan, if you will, that looked at the feasibility of a roundabout at that location. SERPED is saying, again, our regional planning agency is saying, we need more funds, or we don't have the expertise, you should go out and study this further to see if there is a needed that is demonstrated by that study. So, I'll just speak anecdotally, it is a very dangerous intersection for folks who do not travel it every day. You and I, we go down there, we know, as we're coming down the hill, slow down. Watch for those people coming out of Elm Street, right, because I'm heading up North Main Street. There are things that could be better about that. What that project is and what that plan is, more than likely, it's going to be gleaned from the study, should it be successful tonight. And it obviously will be made to the public, because the planning board's a public body, so folks will have an opportunity to hear that at a planning board meeting, so I just wanted to address that, there are legitimate safety concerns there. You may not see it because you go by once or twice a day, but as somebody who spent the regular part of their last 20 years there, going through that intersection, it needs a little tweaking.
I've been going through that intersection for more than 40 years, and yes, I understand the concerns, I just wanted to hear what the official position was.
Sure. Do you feel your question was answered, or do you?
It was answered, I don't necessarily agree with it, but it was answered.
Okay, no, that's fine. Hold on Chandler, just before you go, Victoria or Chief, did either of you want to add anything to what Kevin had said, or did he? Okay, very good, same, all right, Chandler, go ahead, please.
Steven Chandler, Freetown, sorry. I just kind of wanted to reiterate what Kevin said. I work for the Water and Sewer Commission, my office is right at the front corner of Town Hall. So, I see every day near misses, actual accidents, people speeding in all directions, the worst is the traffic coming out of Elm Street. Because people coming down there, a lot of people who've been through town or live in town for decades or years, know that they don't have to stop. But they need to stop, in my opinion. I've almost gotten creamed many times coming down, and I drive the speed limit through town, I drive 20 miles an hour, coming down South Main Street, coming down Elm Street, people are behind me, hawking their horn and swearing and whatever, but yeah, so, you know, you come down the hill, and I'm ready to go to, up to Town Hall or up North Main Street, and people fly right out. And I'd almost deliberately hit somebody a month ago, because I wanted to prove a point, but I said, nope. I know, I shouldn't say that, right?
Chandler, no, no, reruns of Dragnet come on later.
Yeah, yeah, okay, but anyway, no, but because they literally came, they were literally a foot and a half away from my vehicle, and I had to slam on the brakes, and I was tempted not to, but anyway. So, we need to have, yes, I feel that we do need to have a study, because I see the chaos every day, multiple times a day, and so yes, kind of going off of what Kevin said, it's very important to do. I'm sorry?
Mr. Dean says amen to what Chandler just told. Yes, put that right in the record, Ellen, go ahead, please.
Hi. Ellen, we can't hear you.
Ellen, you can get louder.
I was at the new vet office on the corner of Elm Street and South Main. They had to delay my going in, so I was outside as I was putting my dog at the band scan. 300 cars in 20 minutes on a Tuesday afternoon at 3 o'clock. It was outrageous, I knew it, it was between 3:30 and 3:00, so it was 25 minutes. I couldn't believe it, and I started counting after I'd been there like five or 10 minutes. So it was 311 cars, it was full buses, and I didn't see any of the near misses that day, I saw them today, yesterday. Where people are swearing, and landing, and I believe it was Chuck, whoever came up to that here that allows you to know that sometimes going this way, and that helps a lot. I don't think the yield flashing by helps a single bit, I think it's really screwing things up, because people are stopping there, and they don't know where to go, or how to go, and it's it's a disaster, and it's a disaster for things to happen. I asked the desk while I was there, I said, you guys see a lot of accidents? They said, no, we see a lot of near misses, and we hear a lot of swearing. I didn't tell them that, because I heard it yesterday when I was there. It's a question, it really is, and I don't think around that.
Mr. Dean is on his way. No, that's definitely not on.
Get it there?
There you go.
All right.
It was, Ellen, someone played a trick on you, it was turned off. Go ahead.
All I want to say is, as I go through that, because I live at the top of the hill, I think 90% of the people who go through that yield sign don't know what the word yield means.
Do we have any additional questions or discussion on Article Five?
I agree with everybody, Evelyn Alves, Asonet resident, and I don't see why we have a yield sign and not a four-way stop sign, so that everyone has to stop before they proceed. That's my question.
And I think Kevin looks like he may know the answer to the question.
Well, I asked if the pig was okay, quite honestly, and they said it doesn't much matter, we're taking it to get butchered. Well, I mean, it was a good-looking pig. I guess all these questions, and this is great, right? We have different opinions, we have different ideas on how to solve the problem, but there's one thing for sure, there is a problem. And I think utilizing these funds to further study it, to come up with solutions that may work for the community, I think it's money well-spent at this point in time, Mr. Moderator, so I call the vote, if I can do it, right, we have a motion already?
So you, we do have the motion, you actually can't You actually can't call the vote when you're the last person to speak on the question.
Oh, for the love of God, you and your rules.
I... I heard, all right, I have the motion and the second to call the question now. Once again, this is just voting on whether we're going to continue to talk about this, and that is the only thing that we're voting on at this second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion to call the question is adopted unanimously, which means we simply vote on the article. On Article Five, the motion is to adopt the article as read and appropriate the money to study the intersection. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, Article Five is adopted by the majority. It's not unanimous, but it is by the majority. Article Six, to see if the town will vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter One-Fifteen, Section Nine, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of five hundred dollars for the maintenance of veterans' graves, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Six as read. Is there any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Six is adopted unanimously. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into a tax-exempt lease-purchase finance agreement with All American Investment LLC, to acquire and equip police cruisers that may be financed by the issuance of debt for a term up to the useful life of the property being three years, and to be procured as determined by the Board of Selectmen pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty-one C. And furthermore, the sum needed to satisfy the first-year payment of this agreement will be separately identified, raised, and appropriated in the capital budget section of the omnibus budget for fiscal year twenty-four and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Chief of Police. It requires a two-thirds vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Seven as read. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seven is adopted unanimously. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws, Article Ten, Personnel Classification and Compensation Plan, Section Ten Point Eight, excuse me, Item Two. Fire chief, by replacing the words "step three firefighter" as they appear therein with the words "top step firefighter," and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the fire chief. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee takes no position on this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Eight as read. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eight is adopted unanimously. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken under Article Eighteen of the June sixth, twenty-twenty-two special town meeting, which appropriated fifty thousand five hundred dollars for the Chippeway Pump Station backup generator to authorize use of those funds for the purpose of water infrastructure repairs and any incidental or related expenses, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Water and Sewer Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Nine as read. Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Nine is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter One-Firteen, Section Eighteen, to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, the sum of five thousand dollars for the repair or restoration of monuments in various cemeteries, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Ten as read. Is there any discussion on Article Ten? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Ten is adopted unanimously. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of thirty-five hundred dollars from the sale of cemetery lots account to be used by the Cemetery Commission for maintenance and improvements at the Asonet burying ground, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Cemetery Commission. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Eleven as read. Is there any discussion on Article Eleven? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Eleven is adopted unanimously. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Ninety-eight, Section Fifty-six, to amend the general bylaws, Article Three, powers and duties of town officers by adding new Section Three Point Nine, fees for the ceiling and inspecting of weighing or measuring devices, as en filed in the town clerk's office and included as attachment A to this warrant, and/or take any action relative thereto. See Attachment A at the end of the warrant, it's printed on the last page, and for those watching at home, I'll read it off. Attachment A, weights and measures fee schedule. Type of scale, zero to one hundred pounds, fee per scale, twenty-five dollars. Type of scale, one hundred pounds or more, fee per scale, one hundred twenty-five dollars. Type of scale, gas meter, fee per scale, twenty-five dollars. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Twelve as read, which was submitted by the Board of Selectmen, requires a majority vote, and is recommended by the Finance Committee. Is there any discussion on Article Twelve? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Twelve is adopted unanimously. Article Thirteen has a tiny typo, so when I read Article Thirteen, I will read it as it was submitted and as it is attempted, as it is intended for you to vote on, and that is the word changed. That was supposed to be the word charged. So, you will hear the article the way that it was supposed to be printed. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the general bylaws, Article Twenty-nine, Revolving Funds, Section Twenty-nine dash six, authorized revolving funds, by inserting therein the following language, creating an additional revolving fund, said fund to be used by the community program director to create programming for the residents of Freetown pursuant to General Laws, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a half, for community programs, to offset costs of community programs offered to residents with fees charged and received in connection with the programs to be credits to said fund, to be expended by the community program director, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion made and seconded to adopt Article Thirteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Thirteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Thirteen is adopted unanimously as read. Article Fourteen, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Library Trustees to apply for, accept, and expend Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant Funds for a public library project, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Library Trustees. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Fourteen as read. Is there any discuss, Article Fourteen, yes, is there any discussion on Article Fourteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fourteen is adopted unanimously. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of one hundred fifty thousand dollars as local funding for the planning and design phase of the town's participation in the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Library Trustees. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Fifteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Fifteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Fifteen is adopted unanimously. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of supplementing the capital stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends that this article be funded in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Sixteen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Sixteen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Sixteen is adopted unanimously. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of supplementing the stabilization fund, and/or take any action relative thereto. This was submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It requires a majority vote. The Finance Committee recommends this article be funded in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Motion is made and seconded to adopt Article Seventeen as read. Is there any discussion on Article Seventeen? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Article Seventeen is adopted unanimously. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting. Motion is made and seconded to adjourn at eight-twenty-five. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Adopted unanimously with one woo-hoo. Have a good night. Thank you for coming out tonight.